Hello. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. We've called our meeting to order in our earlier closed executive session, so now we are ready to begin. I hope everyone enjoyed their long weekend for Memorial Day and was able to enjoy and also take a moment to reflect and honor our fallen heroes as well as those still currently serving. Dr. Adarhold, do you have any comments at the beginning of this meeting?
Good evening, everyone. Before we recognize our student athletes, just want to make one announcement regarding the June 10th Board meeting. As you may know, on January 1st, Governor Murphy changed the primary, which was originally on June 3rd to June 10th. That put it directly in conflict with this space, which happens to be where many of the voting districts in West Windsor vote. So as a result of that, we're going to be moving our Board meeting to High School South because once elections get publicly noticed, the primary has to be in the exact location as the public general election. So we'll be moving to High School South, to Commons 1 and to the Playhouse for the district celebration, and then we'll be in the Playhouse at South for the Board meeting. So again, that will be on the June 10th evening. We'll have that up on the district website as well as posted here at the Board office. So the evening doesn't, the date doesn't change, but the venue changes. So we do have to just make that public announcement. With that, I'll turn it back to the Board President for the public recognition.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Adarhold. And next, we have a special recognition of our student athletes. So I'd like to invite Kate Dobinson and Jeff Riley up to make that presentation.
Well, first, I want to say thank you for having us here this evening. It is a wonderful opportunity to highlight our athletes. It was really a wonderful winter season at High School North. It wasn't just one team. It was on the track. It was in the pool. It was on the mat. It was on the court. It was everywhere possible. So all around, we had a great winter season. And for me, as an athletic director, what we really want to see is the whole school community come together. It was really wonderful. I was riding the fan bus to the championship basketball game, and some, two students were sitting next to me. I didn't really recognize them, and I said, "Hey, what made you come to this today?" And they said, "Well, about two games ago, we went to a high school basketball game, and I had so much fun with my friends that I just kept going. And every time there's a game, I just want to go watch because it's just so much fun to go there and be with my friends and be with the school, and just draws a whole school community together." So it was really, it was a wonderful season, like I said, and it was a great moment as an athletic director to hear that, for our students to come together as a community and be there and be together. So anyhow, we are here for recognition of our various champions from the winter season and some of our award recipients. And first, I want to talk about some people that set some records in the pool. So I'm going to call up Akil Paveluri, Max Damonte, Will Bayshore, and John Agagliati. Come on up. So all together, these four athletes set the school 200... (laughter) Where's the other guys? All right, well, they were half of the relay team that set the 200 medley relay, and Will was also the 400 free record setter for West Windsor Plainsboro North. And like I said, 100 backstroke was Akil Paveluri, 100 breaststroke was Max Damonte, and these guys took second in the sectionals. They took third at the CBCs, and we're going to really miss them next year because now they're going to go against each other, and hopefully I see them at the Lehigh Lafayette game next year. Because one guy's going to Lehigh, and he's going to get it. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Next, we have track and field, our record breakers for the 5,000-meter run. Most of our people here saw this person last time. You're going to see her again and again and again. Allison Lee. She ran a sub-five-minute mile at the Night at the Nest last week. Allison, please come on up. She's a record setter in the 5,000 meters. You can stay up here. You don't have to go sit down. You should be used to that by now. In the 1,000-meter run, Zui Chinchalkar. Come on up. And the four-by-mile relay, Zui Chinchalkar, Allison Lee, Vivian Ma, and Sarah Sikora. We also have national championship qualifiers. So Zui was one of them. Bree Davis Owens. Allison's another one. Vivian Ma and Sarah Sikora. They all are national championship qualifiers. While setting those records and qualifying for national championships, they also won, by no surprise, the Colonial Valley Conference Championship during the winter. Not to spoil the surprise, but they did the same thing for the springtime, and they were recently the sectional champions as well in the springtime. Special guests tonight are part of that team because of overall team contribution. It wasn't just our four runners-up here. Mahima Bansal, Bree Davis Owens, Zui Chinchalkar, Sarah Sikora, Vivian Ma, and Nina Dixit. And then the boys' winner track and field team. Shabomi Allison. He's a CBC and sectional champion, the 800 meters. And then Agrim Ja was a national qualifier for the 800 and 1600 meters for the ninth graders. Come on up. Great performance this winter, guys, and great job this spring, too. Thank you. Boys' basketball team, come on up. So our boys' basketball team set the school record for 23 wins in a season. They were the central Group Four runner-up. There was a magical season where they're 23-6. We have Willem Carter. Guys, step forward when I call your name. Willem Carter. Ariand Daden. Ryan John Baptiste. Malachi Jeffers-Viera. Ronat Jonasia. Lenny Mangold. Abhi Singh. Jonathan Tang. Blake Amos Winfield. During their season, all CBC honors were given to Ryan John Baptiste and Malachi Jeffers-Viera. And I think for one of the first times ever in school history, the Player of the Year in the CBC went to Malachi Jeffers-Viera. Malachi had 557 points in the season, 242 rebounds, 107 assists, and he led the team in all three categories. It was a great winter season. Can't say thank you enough. Great job this season, guys. We have two coaches here that were named Coach of the Year for their respective sports. And first, I want to call up Bill Furlong. Bill Furlong is also our head varsity football coach. He has done a wonderful job with our wrestling team. His first year, this is his fourth year here. His first year, they were 2-19 in dual meets. And then they're 12-15, 14-14. This year, 11-18. The past season, he had five wrestlers at place in the county tournament. Those same five wrestlers went on to wrestle in the regional tournament, and he also hit a district champion this year. Bill has done a great job in building this wrestling program, and he told me something the other day that really, you know, hit upon the idea that he encompasses everybody in the workplace, and he sees what good people do in this area. And he pointed out that Brian Gould has a wonderful track program because the kids enjoy being there, and he brings them in and makes every kid valued here, every student valued. And he tries to do the same thing with his wrestling program. So Bill is the recipient of the David Eisenhower Coach of the Year Award for the Colonial Valley Conference this year. And then our other Coach of the Year for the CBC basketball, boys' basketball, Luke In Luke's first year, they're 2-18, and then he jumped to 4-19. And then in his third season, which he was also named Coach of the Year as well, he was 14-13. This year, like I said, he set a school record with 23 wins, six losses. He developed this group of seniors through countless hours of on-the-court work, in the weight room, and watching and evaluating endless hours of film. For the second season in a row, he has received the Coach of the Year Award for the CBC. Again, it was a wonderful season for us. Thank you for having us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing several student athletes and a coach from West Windsor Plainsboro High School South. Before I do, I'd like to take a moment and thank all the members of the WWP Board of Education, members of the Central Office Administration, administrators, teachers, coaches at High School South. Without your support, we would not have been able to do any of these things with our student and athletes. All of the support that we get through busing, transportation, all of those, you know, just constant support of finding out how our teams are doing, coming out to games, means so much to myself, to Jeff, and to all of our student athletes and caregivers here tonight. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. I would like to first acknowledge members of the girls' indoor four-by-four team. So please come up. Anastasia Coudin, Soraya Hoover, Adama Turei, and Claire DuMortier. So deemed the Fantastic Four by their coach, Amir Amira Munir, these four student athletes have contributed much to the success of the indoor and spring Pirate Track and Field team. They work hard at each practice, trying to beat their previous time and never being satisfied with what they do. Their individual accolades include: Adama Turei, first place at this year's CBC Long Jump Championship; top three in both the 200-meter and the 400-meter at CBCs; top six in the 400-meter sectionals. Anastasia Coudin, first place in the 400-meters at CBC; top six in the 200-meter at CBC; top six in the 400-meters at sectionals. Soraya Hoover, top six in the 500-meter hurdle at CBCs. Claire DuMortier, top six in the 200-meters at CBC. Collectively, these girls came in first place at sectionals for the 4x100, first place at CBC, and this past winter, they competed at New Balance Nationals. And not only did they break a school record, but they finished 25th in the nation and ninth in the state with a time of 3:5879. I had a chance to re-watch the race today, and the commentary was phenomenal. They used the word consistency. They used the word hard work. They used the word grit. All of these different things that they did over the course of the race, and it is very well-deserved. Your hard work and dedication on the track is second to none. I am proud of all of the work that you put into your sport. Thank you for being such strong role models for future Pirates to come. The next individual that I would like to recognize is 11th grader Julius Kinsler. Come on up, Julius. Coach Matt Coburn has described Julius as one of the hardest workers on the team. Julius is known for running to practice, completing his workout, and then running home. He is always striving to be better than the day before. This past winter season, Julius finished second in the 400-meter and in the top six in the 200-meter at CBC. And at the NJSIAA sectional tournament, he finished first in the 400-meter. This winter, he competed at the Adidas Nationals and came back to WWP as an All-American with a PR in the 400, as he placed fourth with a time of 49:42. Julius is also having a strong spring, and I'm sure he'll be back to be recognized with his spring achievements. The next group that I would like to recognize are members of the Pirate Boy Swim Program, specifically the medley relay. So members of the team include Dash Kiyadev, Julian Fang, Carmel Mayer, and Vikram Pal. This past season at Meet of Champions, and they set a new school record of 1:3659. The previous record was set in 2017 with a time of 1:3733. Congratulations on breaking that school record. Members of this team broke more than just this record this year. And January at CBC prelims, senior Carmel Mayer broke the previous record in the breaststroke of 5934 by completing it in 5888. And then again, in March, at Meet of Champs, he broke his own record and finished the season with a 5738 in the 100 yards breaststroke. Carmel will be swimming at Pace University next year. Vikram Pal also broke a school record in addition to the medley relay and the 200 IM. The previous record was from 2011 with a time of 1:5752, and the new record currently stands at 1:5747. Julian, Dash, and Vikram will all be returning next year to High School South, and I'm excited to see what they do in the pool again. The last individual that I would like to recognize is Coach Jessica Bidwell. Jessica has been leading the Pirate Swim Team since 2015. This past season, Coach Bidwell earned her 100th career win for girls and 100th career win for boys, all in the same night, earning a record of 200 career wins. Coach Bidwell has led the team with grace and class, asking her students' athletes for their best at each and every practice, something that she just doesn't ask for but gives of herself as well. She holds her student and athletes accountable to not only her, but more importantly, to themselves. Coach Bidwell will also be receiving the CBC Coaches Sportsmanship Award on behalf of High School South. Coach Bidwell, it's been a pleasure working for you, and I can't wait to see what next season brings. I'd like to reiterate what Jeff said earlier. Thank you for including our student athletes and our athletic programs in these events. This has been a great opportunity for us to highlight the different things that our student and athletes do each and every day. A few years ago, a student asked me what my favorite time of the day was, and I said, "3 o'clock." And they said, "Oh, because you go home?" And I said, "No, my day just starts at 3 o'clock. I get to then go out to the field. I get to watch our student athletes in the pool, on the track, on the court, and all of the different places where they compete." And it is a great honor to be able to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Kate and Jeff, for your dedication and all you do for our schools, and amazing job to all of our athletes. We do enjoy hearing all the updates throughout the year. And yeah, so now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Adarhold for a quick announcement.
Well, first, let me just reiterate and thank all of our student athletes for being here this evening. Amazing accomplishments. I also want to thank all the parents and guardians for all the work, the tireless work driving and supporting your children. I have five myself, so I understand all too well the constant shuttling and driving around that you do to support them. So thank you for all your support to them. And there's a tremendous amount of coaches out there in the audience tonight, and we'd be remiss if we didn't just recognize the work that they do each and every day in support of our athletes, but in building program and culture in our schools. So thank you to all of our coaches there in the audience this evening. The one announcement was something we've been sort of waiting for, but that was something I would have said at the beginning, and it's just, we actually just got a resignation on the Board of Education. We were expecting this to come in today, so I just actually got a text resignation. Robin Zovich, member of the Board of Education from Plainsboro, is going to be leaving the Board for personal reasons. She wanted to wish all the best to the administration, the Board of Education, the students, and the community. And she said it was an honor to serve you over the last five, almost five and a half years on the Board of Education. From a process perspective, just want to let the community know that when there's a vacancy on the Board of Education, there's a Board Policy 0143.1, and yes, I knew that off the top of my head, that talks about Board vacancies, and it requires us to fill a vacancy within 65 days. So we'll post it tomorrow because it's after the workday. So we'll post tomorrow on the district website, and then from that posting, we will... We've already known this was coming. So we expect to have interviews by the June 24th meeting. So anyone interested in running for the Board will have a period of time that they can then put in, and it's for the completion of this term. Her term ends in December 31st. So it would just be from the time in which the Board selects a candidate, and that's at a public meeting where there's actual public interviews, then the Board will deliberate, go through a process where they select someone. The person will be appointed pending fingerprint clearance, which is just a requirement to serve on a Board of Education. There's a whole list of criteria that individuals need to meet. That'll be posted on the public notice as well. Then, once they get cleared, then they can be officially sworn in by Dr. Russo, and then they could be working as a member of the Board from sometime in July through December 31st. If that individual wants to run for the Board, because it's a vacant seat that starts with a new three-year term in January, they would then have to submit a separate application in July to run for the Board. So a lot of steps for public service, but there are members of the community that I'm sure will be interested, and we just wanted to make that public as soon as we knew it. So with that, I'll turn it back to the Board President.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Adarhold. So that makes it official. And on a professional and personal note, we all really want to thank Robin for her dedication and service to WWP. She brought the fun, the joy, and the practical perspective to all of our lively discussions. Really respect her for, she never held back on her thoughts and opinions, and really value her thoughtful, challenging questions. She is a well-respected member of the Board. We will miss you. We wish you the best. And yeah, you know where we are. So with that, we can move on to the first opportunity for a public comment. The Board invites thoughts and reactions on agenda items and items of concern from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 60 minutes. So we'll open the floor for anyone who has a public comment tonight. I know we have a packed house, but... Okay, seeing none, I can then officially close this public comment period. And... No, go ahead, Dr. Adarhold.
Just to the parents and members of the community that are here, if you're not intending to stay, we're not going to be offended if you get up and go home. You're more than welcome to stay, but...
Well, give him a moment.
Sorry. I knew that was going to happen.
So thanks for bearing with us while we said farewell to all of our visitors tonight. I know they're all going to go home and watch the livestream, right? So now we can turn to our Board of Education Committee reports, and I'll ask Dana to give us a report on administration and facilities.
I seem to have a knack for clearing the room every time I do this. So the Administration Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, May 20th, and you're also going to take the thunder out of my athletics update, which I won't repeat because it's really the same thing that we just heard. So we were very honored to hear all the tremendous accomplishments of our student athletes. Next on our agenda was a road widening project on Route 571. The committee reviewed the potential county road widening project for Route 571. Based upon the current review of plans, there will be minor impacts to frontage property for High School South along 571. As the project moves to finalization, the district administration and professional staff will continue to monitor for additional changes. This project is anticipated to be completed in the summer of 2026. We're also having Phase II architectural and archaeological evaluation at 221 Southfield Road. That's the new property I purchased, I don't know when that was, a year or so ago. The Phase II architectural/archaeological evaluation at 221 Southfield Road is underway. The project is anticipated to take upwards of nine months for full completion. This is a required component of the property by the New Jersey Historical Preservation Office through the New Jersey Environmental Protections Office of Permitting and Project Navigation. The project will review any potential historic, archaeological, or cultural impacts. The purpose of the Phase II archaeological survey work is to present a scope of tasks for research, fieldwork, artifact analysis, and report writing in order to evaluate the historical impacts of the property. Next, we discuss the insurance valuation of the High School South softball field. In a recent evaluation of the High School South softball field, it was recommended that the district take action to protect motor vehicles that utilized Route 571 from potential foul balls. The district is planning to expand the current backstop with a larger capacity of stopping foul balls from going up and over the backstop and into traffic on Route 571. This work is anticipated this summer. The committee will next meet on Tuesday, June 3rd. Thanks.
Thanks, Dana. Any questions or comments from the Board? Okay. Oy, if you could give us a report on curriculum?
The Curriculum Committee met on May 20th. Excuse me. We began with a discussion on Asian American and Pacific Islander Studies. Excuse me, sir. I have some. Thank you. Summer Course Update and Curriculum Review. Supervisor of Social Studies, Dr. Cindy Yacini, highlighted the amazing work of the curriculum writers for the AAPI Summer Course being offered this summer for the first time. The course will focus around identity, power, solidarity, and representation of AAPI individuals. Next on the agenda for voting tonight, the Curriculum Committee recommends approval of the submission of the Comprehensive Equity Plan. Next, technology. The committee recommends approval of the following. One-year agreement with Dreambox Learning to provide, excuse me, remote learning, blended learning solutions advanced for K-5 students for math, digital content instruction from August 1st of this year through July 31st, 2026, at a cost not to exceed $66,735.75. One-year agreement with Riverside Insights, COGAT Online, to provide district-wide licensing from July 1st through July 1st of this year through June 30th, 2026, at a cost not to exceed $24,675.20. A one-year agreement with Explorer Learning Gizmos to provide district licensing for middle school science teachers and upper elementary science teachers from July 1st of this year through June 30th of next year, 2026, at a cost not to exceed $21,851.40. A one-year agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association, NWEA, to provide web-based measures of academic progress, which we know as MAP, for math, reading, and language arts assessments for students in English and in Spanish. The cost of the materials through June 30th is approximately $92,700. Field trips. The Curriculum Committee recommends the following overnight field trips. First, the... First, the Future Business Leaders of America to the National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California, from June 28th through the July 3rd of this year. The cost of that trip is approximately $2,100 per student. For the high school cheerleading squad to Pine Forest Cheerleading Camp in Greeley, PA, Pennsylvania, from August 24th through the 27th of this year, the cost of that trip is approximately $350 per student. New textbook adoption. The Curriculum Committee recommends the following textbooks for approval. First, environmental science for the AP course, Friedland, and Reilia Bedford-Freeman &amp; Worth, 2023. Biology for the AP course, Morris Castanetti, Lepri-Reilia Bedford-Freeman &amp; Worth, 2023. And Biology, Miller &amp; Levine, Essay VVAS, 2023. Professional Development is next, and the committee recommends the following Professional Development for Approval. One AP Science teacher to attend APSI AP Biology at Rutgers University from July 7th through the 10th of this year at a cost not to exceed $1,150. One AP Language Arts teacher to attend APSI AP Language and Composition at Delaware State University from July 14th through the 17th at a cost not to exceed $1,000. One AP Language Arts teacher to attend APSI AP Language and Composition at Manhattan University, virtually from the 21st of July to the 25th at a cost not to exceed $940. One AP Social Studies teacher to attend APSI AP Microeconomics at Rutgers University, virtually from July 21st to the 25th at a cost not to exceed $975. Two AP Language Arts teachers to attend APSI AP Language and Composition at Manhattan University, virtually from the 4th of August through the 8th at a cost not to exceed $940 per person. And three AP Mathematics teachers to attend APSI AP Statistics with College Board, virtually from August 4th through the 8th of this year at a cost not to exceed $799 per person. So a lot of AP Professional Development happening this summer. Next, the Curriculum Committee recommends approval of a grant, approved submission of a grant, application on behalf of the district's Literary Language Arts Department to the New Jersey Department of Education's Funding of Optimal Comprehensive Universal Screeners, our focus to support enhancing our multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, by implementing comprehensive universal screening for students in grades K to 3. In the amount of $21,740, funds will be used for the period of July 1st through June, July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2026. And our committee will next meet on Tuesday, June 3rd at 12, virtually. Thank you.
Thanks Loy. Any questions or comments from the rest of the Board?
Nope. Okay, next, I'd like to invite Ajanta to give the Finance Committee report.
All right. Good evening. The Finance Committee reviewed the monthly financial reports. The administration affirmed that no major accounts are overextended and that the sufficient funds are available to complete the school year. The committee also reviewed various business items that are all found on the agenda this evening for approval. Next, the committee discussed ESAP 2. Meeting with principals are scheduled to discuss how their upcoming solar carport constructions will impact their respective parking lots. At Village Elementary School, the boilers are currently being disassembled in preparation for their replacement. The Finance Committee also discussed the UBHC contract. The contract is scheduled for renewal on the agenda for the 2025-26 school year. We also discussed the custodial RFP. The information submitted during the RFP process was thoroughly reviewed, and leadership teams from the three highest-scoring companies were interviewed. Following this evaluation, Pritchard Industries was selected. The company services numerous school districts across New Jersey and has the capacity and the experience to support a district of our size. The Finance Committee also discussed summer projects. The administration is in the process of finalizing summer facility projects. As part of this work, carpeting will be removed from the hallways at both High School North and South to be replaced with luxury vinyl tile, LVT. Across the district, select classrooms will also have old carpeting replaced either with LVT or new carpet squares, and additional projects are also under discussion and will be confirmed in the coming weeks. In the cafeteria, there were five fewer days for serving in April 2025 in comparison to April 24, which did contribute to a decrease in the total number of breakfasts and lunches served. Despite the overall decrease, there was a notable increase in meals served to students qualifying for meal assistance. The committee also discussed transportation. The May meeting includes renewals of all transportation contracts currently scheduled for continuation. These renewals cover two from school routes, student activities, and other specialized runs. All renewal contracts have been executed at the Consumer Price Index or below in accordance with statutory requirements. Additionally, the agenda covered the cancellation of a quota route that is no longer needed, as well as the approval of additional field trip transportation quotes for the 2024-25 school year. The Finance Committee will meet next on Tuesday, June 17th at 7:00 PM.
Thanks Ajanta. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Okay, now we can move on to the...
You're good?
Okay, now we can move on to the voting portion of our meeting. So can I get a motion for administration items numbers one through five in addition to the White Addenda? Dana and Liz, any questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonzel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. Next, can I get a motion for curriculum and instruction items numbers one through four? Loy and Pooja, any questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Bonzel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. Next, can I get a motion for finance items numbers one through 67? Ajanta and Schwetha, any questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonzel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes. Next, can I get a motion for personnel items numbers one through four, plus the green and pink addenda? Liz and Loy, any questions or comments?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonzel.
Yes.
Ms. McEwen.
Yes.
Just with respect to the Personnel Committee, I just want to note that there is a member of our administration in the audience, and I was just appointed as the new Director of Data Assessment Accountability. It's my pleasure to congratulate Melissa Pearson, Dr. Melissa Pearson, on her appointment this evening. Melissa's been in the district for almost 21 years coming up, last 11 years on a member of our administration as a supervisor of K-5 mathematics, has done a phenomenal job in that area, and in the meantime, has also got her doctorate at UPenn and is now moving into a new role starting August 1st. So we're thrilled to have Melissa join us in this new role, and want to congratulate her.
Thank you. Next, can I get a motion to approve the Board of Education Minutes from the May 13th meeting? Liz and Schwetha?
No.
Nope. Ajanta. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any abstentions? Schwetha and...
I've seen.
All right, perfect. Now, next, do we have any Board Liaison Reports? Okay, so, any new business? Then that takes us to our second opportunity for public comments. The Board invites comments from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 15 minutes. Any public comments? For those of you still standing, remaining? No? Okay, so we can close this opportunity for public comments. And next, I'll be reading this statement so we can recess and to close the executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act authorizes boards of education to meet in the executive session under certain circumstances, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act requires the Board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting to go into private session. Now therefore, be it resolved by the West Windsor Plainsboro Regional School District Board of Education, that it is necessary to meet an executive session to discuss certain items involving the superintendent evaluation. Be it further resolved that any discussion held by the Board, which need not remain confidential, will be made public as soon as feasible. The minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Be it further resolved that the Board will not return to open session to conduct business at the conclusion of the executive session. Now, can I get a motion to adjourn to our second closed executive session? Loy and Ajanta, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Thank you, everyone, for coming to tonight's meeting, and we'll see you next time.